Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum, barely. So, we have Council Members Cooper, Mayor Protem Gilman, and Council Member Partially Excused Tonight. So, we are going to move ahead with, I'm going to make a brief announcement that we have made a... I'm going to have the city manager explain the change to the agenda with that one consent calendar item that we changed, like, one of the, part of the language on.
Yeah, so, on what was item 4F in your packet? So, item 4F in your packet, the language around the city manager's recommendation has changed since the packet was published. It needed to reflect that this item went before the Land Use Committee, and the Land Use Committee is making a recommendation to the full council. So, we added that language to item 4F. That's different. So, nothing else structurally has changed on the staff report, just that piece.
All right, so, it's just different than what was published online, so we may need to make a note of that, and then approve the agenda as amended. So, entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You also need to address item 6B on your agenda.
That was the other one. Thank you. Thank you.
I take back my motion?
Yeah. We never got a second, I don't think. Sorry. Because we don't have the full crew up here tonight, we decided to table item 6B, which was the discussion around amendments to our parking ordinance, specifically an ordinance amending residential parking requirements. That we have postponed that till June 6th, so we can have everybody present, because it's a pretty robust topic. So, with that, that also amended, I entertain a motion. So, moved? All right, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any naysayers? All right. We have... You know, it's just one of those days where every day, you know, every hour, things changed. So, we have an agenda, which takes us to special recognition this evening, and we have three of those, and they're all intact. So, we're going to start with item 2A, which is a proclamation recognizing Global Accessibility Awareness Day, and I have Council Member Huen to read that for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas, Global Accessibility Awareness Day was established 12 years ago to begin conversation and learning about digital access and inclusion in the more than 1 billion people in the world with disabilities and impairments. And, whereas, the city of Olympia recognizes that disability challenges affect 20% of the world's population, and that people with disabilities must be able to experience the world, community events, web-based services, content, and other digital products with the same successful outcome as those without disabilities. And, whereas, according to the annual Disability Statistics Compendium, approximately 13% of people living in Thurston County have one or more disabilities affecting their vision, hearing, cognition, movement, self-care, or independent living. Recent research done by Experience Olympia and Beyond found that 20% of Thurston County visitors have a disability. And, whereas, technology allows community members to connect to vital government services through websites, software, mobile devices, and other digital sources. And residents increasingly depend on digital technology to access employment, education, entertainment, commerce, healthcare, and other services. And, whereas, accessible technology benefits everyone with digital material that is easier to read, applications that are easy to navigate, search results that are more robust, and content that reaches a wider audience. And, whereas, the city of Olympia sees state and federal legal requirements for digital and technological accessibility and accessibility of public places, and strives to meet or exceed those standards. And, whereas, the city of Olympia is committed to ensuring equal access, increasing accessibility standards within the city of Olympia's daily operations, affirming the rights of persons with disabilities to be contributing members of our community. And, now therefore be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim May 18th, 2023, as Global Accessibility Awareness Day. The city of Olympia encourages residents to become aware of the many ways in which they can impact the accessibility of our community, including both our physical spaces and digital content, and contribute to the health, happiness, and independence of family, friends, neighbors, and one another. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 16th day of May, 2023. Olympia City Council Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Member Huen. At this time, I'd like to invite forward Sarah Norton with the Disability Inclusion Network, and Larry Wilkinson, a member of our Social Justice and Equity Commission, to receive the proclamation.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I am fortunate to be standing here amongst a star. Sarah Norton has been our past chair of the Disability Inclusion Network, of which I, as a state employee, have been involved with. And so, I want to thank Sarah for what she has done behind the scenes to lead good conversations. The mayor and council, as you guys know, many of you know me personally and know what the benefit of digital accessibility means to me. It means everything that you hadn't talked about. But it also means about having audio pedestrian signals, and all those types of things that builds a community. And want to, to the credit of your city's staff, and I really appreciate Jay's work and others in this area, that the city is doing nothing about us without us, because it's all about us with us. And I think that that is really an example of how we need to move forward with the ADA. Many people will tell you over 30-some years that there's been little progress. Well, just look around at the city here, and although we may have some work to do on a lot of sidewalks, the city was one of the very few cities to actually adopt an ADA transition plan. One of the few. I know, when I was at DOT, a state agency, and I regulated those, you guys were in the top 10. So, that just demonstrates the effort and the commitment, and the work that you has been done with the city, and are continued. And the journey's not done. The journey shall continue, and we're here to support that, and we thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sarah Norton, and I wanted to thank Larry. I got to know him through my work with the State and Disability Inclusion Network. And when I was asked to come down and accept this, it meant a lot to me to know that my new home, city of Olympia, I moved out here about 16 years ago, so it's not quite new anymore, but isn't just committed to meeting the bare minimum federal guidelines, but is truly committed to going above and beyond, and make this a place where everyone can be included and have access to increase their socioeconomic advantages, and ensure that people can have economic stability. As somebody who is neurodivergent, digital access is also crucial for me, to be able to navigate websites, understand the material, and what I'm looking for in finding the information. So, thank you, city of Olympia, for passing this, and thank you, Larry, as well.
Thank you. Okay, our next special recognition is a proclamation recognizing Public Works Week, and then a presentation of an American Public Works Association Award. So, at this point, I would like to ask Council Member Payne to read the proclamation.
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Olympia, Washington. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, those employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community. And whereas, it is in the public's interest for the residents of Olympia, Washington, to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, in 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Olympia City Council does hereby declare the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the city of Olympia. We urge all residents to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, the 16th day of May, 2023. Mayor, City of Olympia, Cheryl Selby.
So, I'd like to invite forward at this time our interim director of the Public Works Department, Mark Russell, and then he can introduce Lauren Beem, who's president of the APWA Washington Chapter. Can I give this, oh wait, do you want me to wait, and we'll get a picture with it, and then, okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, interim Public Works Director. Thank you so much for the proclamation honoring our public work staff as part of National Public Works Week. The mission of the Olympia Public Works Department is we build and maintain the foundation of our extraordinary Olympia. We do this by providing foundational services to our community in the areas of drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste, transportation, engineering, contracts, fleet, facilities, safety, and clean team. Those are all services this community relies on and expects things just to work. When you turn the water on, they expect the water to come out of the faucet and go down the drain, and not have to worry about it, and those are what our staff do. Here tonight are several members of the public works team. I want to take this opportunity to personally thank all of Olympia's public work staff for their dedicated service to our community. The critical work they do every day, 24 hours a day, is very much appreciated. As part of celebrating National Public Works Week, we also wanted to recognize an award the city is receiving from the American Public Works Association for our Franklin Street Improvements Project Downtown. As you know, the Franklin Street Project enhanced mobility for all modes of transportation through the heart of downtown with significant roadway and urban design improvements. Here tonight to present the award is Lauren Beem, president of the APWA Washington Chapter.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor Selby, members of the council, good evening. My name is Lauren Beem. I am the 2023 Washington Chapter President of APWA, and I'm so honored to be here, not only to represent APWA, but also as a citizen of Olympia who loves this city. APWA Washington Chapter is proud to announce that the city of Olympia Public Works Department earned one of only seven awards granted this year through our Public Project of the Year Awards Program, and that is for the Franklin Street Improvements Project. The awards that APWA does through their program represent the best in public works, and this project was selected as the winner out of the most competitive of all of the categories, transportation under 5 million. These awards also recognize the alliance between the managing agency, the contractor, the consultant, and their cooperative achievements for the good of their communities. City of Olympia's downtown core is one of Washington's most historic and unique areas, supporting over 450 independently-owned businesses and home to nearly 2,000 residents. As part of the 2017 Downtown Strategy, the city identified a clear set of commitments to sustain and improve their downtown that would benefit all, from residents to workers and businesses to visitors. The Franklin Street Project improves walkability, maintains and improves mobility for cars and freight, and supports transit. On a personal note, my office is down by the farmer's market, and I often walk through this area to grab a slice at Old School for my lunch break, and I've noticed a distinct difference in the way that it feels from a safety perspective, as well as the aesthetic created by the project. It's beautiful. I drove through it there again tonight. It looks fantastic. So, I just want to extend my congratulations to the project team, and a big thank you for all that the city does for its citizens and for the public works industry through APWA. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
So, thank you very much, Lauren, for that lovely presentation. I'm going to... Yeah, you know what I'm wondering is if we could all come down. We'll hold it. We're going to do a photo op. This is a big, it's a big award. So, anyone from the public works team?
Can we have all public works in place? Public works in place.
Next, you have one more special recognition, and that is one that we do annually, and that's recognizing Olympia Bicycle Month. And so, we're going to have Council Member Madrone read that proclamation, and then we'll invite forward some representatives of the Bicycle Community Challenge.
Thank you, ma'am. Very excited to read this proclamation. I have my bicycle mug, and I rode my bike to City Hall, and Chris and I just signed up for the Bicycle Community Challenge for Team Olympia. Whereas, bicycling is one of the cleanest and most energy-efficient forms of transportation. And whereas, bicycling instead of driving can help us reach the greenhouse gas emission reduction targets identified in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And whereas, bicycling instead of driving can also help us reduce traffic congestion and meet the vehicle mile traveled goal in the Thurston Regional Transportation Plan. And whereas, bicycling can connect many community members to opportunities and resources without needing to own or maintain a car. And whereas, riding a bicycle can improve physical and mental health. And whereas, the city of Olympia has a bicycle network, which includes a bike corridor, 32 miles of bike lanes, and 10 miles of the regional trail system within city limits. And whereas, the city's transportation master plan includes projects to expand the bike network. And whereas, the city street safety plan prioritizes the safety of bicyclists, among other vulnerable users on the street. And whereas, inner-city transit, with the support of many local businesses and organizations, is hosting the 36th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of the 53rd Earth Day and 66th National Bike Month, the Olympia City Council hereby proclaims the month of May, 2023, as Olympia Bicycle Month in the city of Olympia, and encourages all our community members to ride their bikes during the month of May and throughout the year. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, the 16th day of May, 2023. Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's give it a round of applause for all those two-wheelers. So, at this point, I'd like to invite forward Kristin Gilkerson and Duncan Green to talk about what's going on in May.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Kristin Gilkerson. I'm a transportation program specialist with the city's Public Works Department. Tonight, Duncan Green from Inner City Transit is joining me to celebrate Olympia Bike Month and to help promote the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. So, we'll hear more about the BCC soon, and you've already outlined some great benefits of riding a bike. So, I thought I would quickly highlight a couple of projects happening in our community this year that help support bicycling. So, first, we will be wrapping up the safety improvements at State Avenue and East Bay Drive. You might have already noticed some construction already. But this location was identified in our street safety plan, and this project does prioritize the safety of both pedestrians and bicyclists. It includes updated curb ramps, raised pedestrian islands that separate cars from bicycles, and green bike markings throughout the project area to help raise awareness of space dedicated to cyclists. Next is the Boulevard Road Trail Crossing Project. We plan to improve the bicycle and pedestrian crossings on Boulevard Road between the Union Avenue Pathway and Wheeler Avenue. It includes improvements to the existing crosswalk with the addition of two new crosswalks. We'll update the curb ramps and adjust the grade of the Union Avenue Pathway, and it will also extend the bike corridor, currently starts downtown, ends at Lyons Park, but that will come down to Boulevard Road and connect to the trail network. You can learn more about these two projects on the city's website, on the transportation page. But yeah, now I'd like to pass it over to Duncan to learn more about the BCC. Thanks.
So, yes, thank you, mayor and council, for the record. My name's Duncan Green, and I'm here representing Inner City Transit and the Bicycle Community Challenge. And I just want to thank you again for proclaiming May yet again as Bike Month in the city of Olympia. Not sure exactly how many times that's happened, but the BCC started in 1988, and I think they probably instituted the proclamations around the same time. So, we're in our 36th year, as has been mentioned. The Bicycle Community Challenge is the longest-running bike challenge in our region, if not the West Coast or even the country. So, for over three and a half decades, the BCC has been encouraging people to use a bike for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And now, for the last two years, we've opened the challenge up to all kinds of bicycling just to involve more people and encourage them to enjoy all the benefits, good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. And we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation, too. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to the individual and community health and well-being, and biking for transportation adds benefits for our climate and other aspects as well. And I don't know, I forgot to bring a poster with my owl, our owl mascot. Is it okay if I show a tiny version of it on my phone? So, it's, I'm kind of blowing it up here. This is a great-horned owl that's part of our poster for the year. And I had the good fortune to see this owl in our front yard last July 4th and get a photo of it, which I incorporated into our poster. So, and as you probably can't read from anywhere but right here, our slogan for this year is "Who is Going to Ride Today?" So, but, you know, it'd be nice to bring a little levity to our event, along with the other benefits of riding a bike. We have over 40 local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from donated prize items, offering discount coupons and free passes, supporting our events, running their own parallel challenges in-house, and lots more. So, we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. And so, don't disappoint the great-horned owl. Ride in the Bicycle Community Challenge this May, and celebrate our 36th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. One last little piece, we organize several events throughout the year. May Bike Month is just our kind of flagship event. We also have the Winter Bicycle Challenge in February, and, which has been growing quite well over the last few years. We had 379 intrepid winter bicyclists participate this year. We kick off the bike season, the spring bike season, with the Earth Day Market Ride, and over 130 people came out for the Earth Day Ride this year. And participation in the Bicycle Community Challenge to date, as of 10 minutes ago, when I checked my phone, was 622 people, having ridden about 33,000 miles so far, halfway through. And we're going to keep on pushing, get more folks involved, and riding more. So, and, don't want to miss mentioning that day after tomorrow, this Thursday, is Bike to Work Day. So, we'll have seven bike refresher stations scattered about downtown and on the various peripheral directions around Olympia, where you can stop and get free coffee and treats, and bike swag, and free bike map, and chat with other bikes, bikers. So, that's this Thursday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. You can check all of this out on bcc.intradit transit.com, and it's really easy to participate in the BCC as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to that website, sign up, or log into your existing account. And feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions at any time. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that council may have right now as well. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Duncan. And are there any questions for either Duncan or Kristin regarding the contest, or how it's rolling out? It was a very thorough coverage. Thank you, thank you. And I think, I think that's it.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Yeah, and I'm really intrigued about the owl, though. I'm going to have to definitely go on the website.
Yeah, and there should be some posters around City Hall as well.
Oh, cool.
So, take a look for those.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You, too.
There is Mayor Protem Gilman has joined us for public comment. Awesome. I am going to have us now move into our public comment period. And this evening, we have quite a few people signed up, both remotely and in chambers. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the people that signed up for in chambers, and then we'll get as far as we can. We dedicate a half an hour at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. If we run over, then we put it at the end after our business items. So, if we don't get to you in the first half hour, we'll get to you after the business meeting concludes. So, the public comment period is time for us to hear from our community on issues related to city business that can include items on tonight's agenda. We ask that speakers not speak to items that have been in a part of public carrying in the last 45 days or in the upcoming, next 45 days. And that's about it. I think most of the people that have signed up have done this before. So, there's an in-chambers, there's a countdown clock over my right shoulder. You have two minutes. And then, when you are commenting on screen, it will be on the Zoom screen, the countdown clock. So, I'm going to give two names at a time, so you can kind of be prepared to get up to the podium, so we can get through as many people as possible in that first 30 minutes. I've got Karen Clemmons, followed by Dearlin Joy Kramer, followed by Linda Malenchuk Finnan. Karen Clemmons? Dearlin Joy Kramer? Yeah, you want to come up to the, yeah?
Hello, mayor and council. My name's Dearlin Joy Kramer, and she/her, they/them pronouns. And I'm approaching you and speaking on behalf of Capitol City Pride this year, and the only trans fam, and the greater LGBTQ plus community. This year, we have the fortunate chance to team up with Capitol City Pride in creating Olympia Pride Festival on July 1st, and we have been assigned to make the march happen. We're still waiting approval on the final route, but it's going to come from the Capitol grounds fountain, all the way down to Percival Landing. And on that march, there's a lot of blocks that we're going to have to close. We understand that there's a fee attached to every block that we have to close. And unfortunately, this year, due to fundraising, was kind of directed more towards helping local businesses recover from the pandemic, we are kind of short on funds this year. So, we're asking maybe if the city can help us out and possibly waive the fee for closing those blocks for the Pride March for the festival this year. Basically, council, what we're asking for is a little bit of equity. Basically, Council, what we're asking for is a little bit of equity, so we can create more inclusion, which will help foster diversity.
All right, thank you. So I think this is your first time speaking at public comment?
Yeah.
And it's not a dialogue up here? So you can talk to us about what you need, you know, follow up with? And then after everyone has spoken, then we can direct you to a staff member or ask follow-up questions with staff. So that's what we'll do for you, okay? And I can see our city manager's already like, "I got this." All right, thank you. Next, we have Linda Mallenchuk-Finnan, followed by Bev Bassett.
Council members and Mayor, hi this evening. I'm, may not be around on June, locally in June 6th, so I'm still directing myself to the parking regulation, if you don't mind. I'm opposed to dropping all the parking regulations currently in neighborhoods and new developments I live in. Oh, this one? Thank you. Linda Mallenchuk-Finnan, 3122 28th Avenue, Southeast Olympia, Castlewood neighborhood. And I'm opposed to dropping all the parking regulations in neighborhoods and new developments, and see it as engendering several concerns and consequences. I think it will make for more competition for existing parking, and it can mean further distances to walk to wherever you're living at night, or with children, with groceries, with accessibility devices. There hasn't, secondly, there hasn't been real, enough discussion, or real discussion. Many of my neighbors, even though I tried to let them know, haven't fully understood what's going on, and we're shocked to hear that this possibility from the Planning Commission existed. On safety, how can I know my car is being safe from being stolen for catalytic converters if I can't even see it from where I ended up having to park because there were so many other people parking around wherever I'm living at that point? Many planners seem to think that apartment dwellers have no, have no cars, and these days, most have partners, there's, both have cars. And if there's students, then every student has a car to get to their class schedule. So I appreciate all the opportunity to speak, and I really think that it's the role of planners and city council to foresee and prepare for these consequences and prevent them or mitigate them. And deregulating all the parking is not a good strategy to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Bev Bassett, followed by Janet Jordan, followed by Carrie Jacobs.
Do I speak into both?
No, just one.
Just this one? Okay. Bev Bassett, 1218 Marion Street, Northeast Olympia. Even though I have zero expectation that anything I have to say to this body will be listened to or heeded by experience, I am here anyway to let you know my thoughts about your draconian and foolhardy, absolute zero new parking requirements in a new residential, in new residential development. It is not surprising to me that the carefully handpicked significance in the Olympia Planning Commission completely ignored staff recommendations for reduced parking minimum requirements and slashed the requirement down to absolute zero, because they obviously have an agenda onto which they callously intend to force people onto buses. Let them ride buses has exactly the same quality of sentiment to me as let them eat cake, especially since adequate buses do not now and may never be a reality in Olympia because of our limited geographic boundaries being unlikely to ever allow the kind of public transit it would take for a realistic alternative to cars. Zero parking insults the life reality of most Olympia citizens and voters. It's time the Olympia City Council considered how your zero parking regulations will impact ordinary people for a change.
Thank you. Next, I have Janet Jordan, followed by Carrie Jacobs.
Good evening, I'm Janet Jordan. Talking about eliminating parking spots as a requirement for builders, eliminating parking spaces seems like a step towards creating a car-free city, or at least a car-free zone in the city. I did some research on what such a project would entail. The following elements are found in most successful car-free cities or zones. The core is mostly residential. Services and facilities such as supermarkets and gyms are placed around the perimeter. The distances between these facilities and the core are determined by the frequency of usage, with more frequently used lying closer to the city center. The facilities will be decentralized around the city with the goal to reduce walking distances, to improve residential access, and to minimize the need for new road infrastructure. As alternative to a decentralized configuration would be a central public transport stop surrounded by dense shops and services that provide easy public access without walking. Has the city of Columbia put these planning elements in place? If not, the city is expecting the residents of these particular apartments to carry the burden of going car-free without the support of appropriate infrastructure. Without a coordinated plan, including pedestrian and bicycle pathways, bus service that puts people a block or two away from all city destinations, and appropriate distribution of services around the city, it isn't right to take away private cars. This city should require parking spaces for at least one car per family, per residence, unless the entire area is engineered to go car-free. I look forward to hearing that Olympia has undertaken this effort in a serious way.
Thank you. Next, I have Carrie Jacobs, and I think it's Bill Brunz. Is Carrie Jacobs here? Carrie Jacobs, all right. We're gonna move on to Bill Brunz.
Greetings. Oh, there we go. I got it.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm here to talk about the parking as well. My name's Bill Brunz. I am in favor, actually, of the changes, proposed changes. I'm a somewhat new resident to Olympia. I've been here for less than a year, but I've walked probably 1,500 miles around the city. I'm an avid walker. I probably would have been more if I wouldn't have foot surgery, but that's a different story. Olympia has a car problem. The biggest problem in Olympia, in my opinion, is the excessive amount of cars. It affects Olympia negatively economically, socially, environmentally. If Olympia is committed to equality, we must reduce our car dependency. This is not even a matter of debate. This is just a fact. I've been hit, almost hit more times than I can count by cars. Northwest Olympia where I live, I give it a grade of D in terms of walkability. It's quite poor. I'm glad to see that the Capitol Mall Triangle is a proposed area of change. The Capitol Auto Mall should be included in that as well. It's effectively a giant waste of space. And actually, I really like Olympia despite all these negative things that I'm saying, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't. I love Olympia, and I'm glad to see that these changes are being proposed, and I'm strongly in support of them. And one last thing. Necessity is not the mother of invention. Permission is the mother of invention. And if we don't allow people to build housing without parking, it precludes the opportunity to change our car dependency. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the in-person commenting for tonight. We're gonna switch to our online folks that have signed up. And the first person I have is Janay Huber, followed by Anna Schlecht, followed by Anthony Keen. I juggled the signup list. Some people signed up both places, sorry. And then some people have already spoken to us, and so I want to give those other people a habit.
Janay is traveling. Our timer may be on the struggle bus, so if so, I'll use the inside timer.
Okay. So you didn't, I can also time it, too. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Janay Huber, we can see you.
Yay.
Good.
Hopefully you can hear me.
We can.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Selby and members of council. My name is Janay Huber, and I'm here this evening in support of setting parking maximums for residential development. I'd like to address some of the underlying assumptions that I've heard about this proposal when it was heard by the Planning Commission. Many of the comments assume that on-street parking is bad. In fact, vehicles parked at the curb create friction that slows drivers down, making neighborhood streets safer. On-street parking also provides an effective steel barrier between people, homes, and moving traffic. It also allows, it also delivers people directly to a sidewalk where they don't have to navigate through an unsafe parking lot. And an emphasis on on-street parking means fewer curb cuts for driveways, which in turn protects cyclists, pedestrians, and passing vehicle traffic from cars that are backing out. Moreover, each curb cut made to accommodate off-street parking reduces the available on-street parking by one spot. So for example, if a new unit requires two off-street parking spaces, only one off-street parking space is actually gained because the one curbside spot has been lost to the curb cut that creates the driveway. All of this also creates a lot more impervious surface that then ends up as runoff and Puget Sound, or with pollution runoffs into Puget Sound. I've also heard emergency responders, garbage and recycling services, and postal delivery cited as irreconcilable conflicts. However, all of these services function just fine in higher-density cities. And finally, our bus service in Olympia is exceptional for a town with a low-density development pattern. But the greater frequency of service that I think we all want will only come when we start building in the more compact manner that this type of proposal starts to allow. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna Schlecht, followed by Anthony Keen.
Anna is traveling.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Well, good evening, Mayor Selby and local city council, and fellow neighbors of Olympia. Two things tonight on my mind. Number one, thank you so much for the fabulous things you've done with Lyons Park. Lived near Lyons Park for 45, almost 50 years. It's got walking paths for older disabled people like me, and on summer nights, that park is just filled with families and kids, and they're dying to go through the splash park. So thank you, thank you. I'm here tonight in support of the proposed parking revisions. I see it as another positive and bold step in responding to a very critical housing need. We need more housing in general, and we need more housing that's affordable. And everything that goes into the cost, the basis of building housing, comes out the other end on resident costs. Opponents say that parking is gonna be a barrier for lower-income people. I'd say that the cost of housing is the largest barrier that low-income residents face. Someday, we hope to become, to create more density in our house and build a second unit on our second floor. And it's something that's very important for older LGBTQ folks who experience a lot of housing discrimination. It will help us to age in place. The parking requirement will help us to do that. So again, we're in a housing crisis, and it requires bold actions. And your leadership on parking is gonna be the kind of bold leadership that we need. I know the change is tough. When I moved here in the mid-1970s, parking tickets were 25 cents. And I don't think that we can go backwards in time to that. You know, time marches on, and we have to meet today's problems without yesterday's expectations. In closing, I really urge all of the council and other folks to listen to the people who will benefit the most from this change. You're gonna hear, you have heard from a lot of neighborhood organizations, which are overwhelmingly.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, we have run out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anthony Keen, followed by Karen Mesmer.
Anthony's traveling.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm not gonna talk to you about parking, so there's that. So I'm here because it's hot. We just experienced another record-breaking weekend of heat, to the point where Thurston County opened up cooling centers to try to help people cool off. Well, what have we been doing, and what could we do better? One thing we could do is we could open up the splash pads sooner. For some reason, we have decided that the splash pad in Woodruff Park, and I'm assuming the one in Lyons Park when it's finished, would be the same schedule. It runs from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Memorial Day to Labor Day. Well, year after year, May has been very, very hot, just, you know, as we just witnessed. And just looking at the calendar between now and Memorial Day, or the forecast, everything is gonna be in the 80s and 70s with one day maybe dipping down into the 60s. This leads me to sort of two requests. One is, can you just please ask the city manager to turn on the water? Let the kids get out and play now. Post it now. Make that change now, so that we can use the resources that already exist. The second is, consider changing the schedule. And if you look at the Play at the Plaza, which is kind of better known as the river in front of the Children's Museum downtown, they have hours where they're open in April from 10:00 to 6:00, and their summer hours started in May, and they run from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So they're open earlier in the season, and they're open for longer hours. I would ask that the city of Olympia consider mirroring that schedule for splash pads and other resources for children to cool off. It's hot. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I have Karen Mesmer, followed by Lauren Thompson, followed by Andrew Hannah.
Karen is traveling.
Hello, members of the council. Thank you for taking comment this evening. I have a couple of comments about the parking, the parking regulation that you're considering in the future here. First is, the parking pass program is not incentivizing car-free living. Downtown rentals are now offered a very low-cost parking pass, and with that pass program, a car tenant, car-free tenant is not likely getting any lower rent rate than others. Those who do own cars should pay the cost to park their car. And giving low-cost parking in downtown is honestly creating a discouraging parking situation for business customers who want to come into the downtown area. Part of the stated intent for this regulation is to provide housing where people do not need a car to meet their daily needs. This is a great and laudable goal. You just recognized Accessibility Day and Bike Month. We'll need to do much more than that. If you really mean for this, then you must assign significantly more resources to move the Transportation Master Plan forward sooner than later. This means hiring more staff to plan and implement projects for active transportation. This is what we need to support car-free living. Sidewalks, safe crossings, pathways, bike safety projects, curb ramps. I hear you imagining a future without a need for cars. Please show the community your intent. Please show the community your intent and your commitment to that through your budget decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Thompson, followed by Andrew Hanna.
Lauren is traveling.
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name's Lauren. I moved here to Olympia about a year ago from Kansas City. And we had a similar argument about parking in Kansas City. I'm here to ask that you vote no, or at least amend what is going to be put in front of you today. In Kansas City, I lived on a street where it was mixed-use, and it was single-family and multifamily. And I would say 80% of the homes and units had no designated parking. And, you know, you would hope that that would encourage people to use transit and to come off of cars. But the reality is that most people parked their two cars per family on the street. And I lived that reality. It definitely cuts down on the city services that were accessible to our street in Kansas City. We had trash issues. Street cleaning was a problem. We absolutely had more car thefts than other streets near us where people were able to park off the street. I'd also just say that in areas where they do this zero-parking policy, they tend to be in higher transit areas. And usually, those multifamily units tend to need .5 parking spots. So I feel like that, as a minimum, is far more reasonable. I'm also very concerned about the lack of accessible parking units, that if a developer decides to do zero parking spots, then they don't need to provide any accessible parking spots. And I think making that minimum .5 will ensure that the building is accessible to those with mobility issues. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Andrew Hanna, followed by Shanti Mai.
Both Andrew and Shanti do not appear to be signed in.
Okay. We're going to move on to Walter Jorgensen, followed by Douglas Benson.
Waiting for Walter to make the trip. He's traveling. He seems to have come back.
Do you want to, is anyone else in the queue? Is Doug Benson or Larry Jezza?
Larry Jezza is, but I'm going to try with Walter one more time.
Okay. I thought we were going to get everybody in, but if we have to wait this long between people, maybe not.
I will try, Larry.
Okay, thank you.
Larry's traveling.
Okay.
Larry is a panelist, but he's, his camera is off.
Mr. Jezza, can you hear me? Can you turn your camera on? There we go. There we are.
Here we are. Sorry about.
All right, you're on.
I'll start over again. Thank you. Okay, I urge the city council not to adopt a divisive and rushed zero-minimum off-street parking change that would be applied in every area of the city. Until you have done the necessary staff work and honored your commitment stated in your Commerce Department grant application for a, quote, "an especially high level of public outreach", to build a stronger understanding of why this is an important step, including the concerns about parking impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. That's the language in the Commerce Grant that you submitted. Given the abrupt and poorly examined changes made in recent weeks, you should take the time needed to meet the intent and spirit of what you wrote and what you said you would do in the Commerce Grant. It was so poorly constructed and hurried that I was shocked to discover that until I alerted the staff that the change would result in zero accessible parking spaces, nobody was aware of that consequence. That problem was fixed in subsequent meeting, but it's indicative of what happens when, without adequate public input, it results in unforced errors. I hope that by now you have come to understand that you could meet the Commerce Department deadline by adopting changes that are reasonable reductions, receive the full grant amount, and continue to have a dialogue with the community about any further reductions, including zero minimum options that could be applicable to the conditions in the neighborhood warrant. Do a complete and full and open analysis of the issue and its impact on neighborhoods before you act on a rushed measure. The proposal before you tonight is unnecessarily divisive. I heard some excellent debate and points made today by other speakers about reduced parking and how it might work and even what would have benefits. But some of the assumptions made include conditions that don't pertain to every area of the city. For example, cars that would be metal barriers that protect walkers doesn't apply when there are no sidewalks or walkways, as we know we have a problem with in our city. Instead, it makes walkers compete with cars for the same roadway. Would a policy that fails to recognize this difference be prudent? This is an example of how a well-researched and civil community dialogue can build bridges for greater understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, we have, is Mr. Jorgensen ready, do you think?
The promotion to panelist was declined last time.
Oh, interesting. So, not sure how that happens. Was it declined on their end?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. So our last speaker then is Douglas Benson.
Doug doesn't seem to be signed in.
Okay. Then that concludes public comment for this evening. We made it in half hour. That was pretty amazing. So this is the time when we get to ask questions of staff regarding anything that was brought up during public comment. I think we already have an understanding that our city manager, Jay Bernie, will be talking with Dear Lynn Joy Kramer regarding the permit process. And I believe they, her group of folks from Pride left the building, so maybe, oh, you did? Oh, excellent. Great, thank you so much. And then anything else? Councilmember Wen, followed by Councilmember Madron.
I'll just fit mine in here. This is not related to the parking, at least not initially. So also, I guess pun intended, I'm keen on Anthony Keen's thoughts about mirroring the schedule for the splash park and other resources, whatever those might be with the, to the Hands on Children's Museum. We all know what I'm talking about, the river walkway there, that children and older people do play in. So I would like us to look into that. And also see just overall, I'd love to hear an update on what more we can do as it is getting, hopefully it'll stop, but it is getting progressively hotter. Oh, and then just also, just, we had so many great public comments tonight about parking, and I think a pretty good show of folks that are in favor of and folks that are not in favor of this changed, or this proposed change to parking. And so with that, I'm going to hold on any, you know, I don't personally have a decision as tonight we are moving the parking discussion to the June 6 meeting, and thus having more time to hear from, whether it's in this type of forum or through email or through just seeing folks outside and meeting with people. So I do want to acknowledge that there is an opportunity for getting even more input from folks and looking forward to thinking on these really, really well-thought-out points that are brought to us tonight. And then just also underscoring one of, or a couple of the speakers had said, this is not an easy decision by any means, and I'm so glad that we are holding on it. It is one that even in this short 30 minutes here, we can see how charged it really is. And so it's just, it's not one that I certainly myself take lightly and that of my councilmates or so I've seen. So thank you for being here tonight. And please know that we have even more time now for public comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I'm also going to hold my comments till June 6 on the parking stuff. But I did, I also wanted to speak to what Anthony Keen was speaking about in terms of the splash park and yes, extending the schedule and aligning it with the Hands on Children's Museum. But I also think that when we have extreme weather events, and I know the temperatures that we've reached the past few days might not register as extreme compared to some of the heat domes that we've experienced in recent summers. But I think that when we're getting these really hot days and it's humid out, and we have a lot of households without air conditioning, to just kind of look at those as extreme weather days and be able to turn on the water so that, you know, people can find ways to cool off.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne.
Yes. Just briefly, I wanted to thank everybody who spoke tonight for public comment. I did want to just speak briefly to the insinuation that the body is not listening to all of the concerns about the parking, zero-parking proposal. And as Councilmember Wen said earlier, it is a difficult decision. And it is certainly not something we're taking lightly. And so I believe you will see that when it comes back to the dais for us to discuss in the coming weeks. And city manager Bernie, I just wanted to just share that it would be great in a follow-up meeting if we could at least speak to publicly what decisions we've come to when it comes to the Pride Parade, so folks can hear the follow-up on that when a decision has been made about their request. Oh, you can do it now? Perfect. Thank you.
All right. And you guys covered everything I had made notes on. The only one I just want to clarify, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Well, I'm going to pile on on the splash park and the Pride comments and support. I'm, I'm, I agree with those. And I just want to, I really appreciate the many emails that have come in around the parking issue and the depth of thinking that's coming from the community. It's really, really appreciated. There's two questions I'm working on now, and I'd welcome more input. One is about what sort of burden shifts to local governments and the taxpayers with the zero-parking in a residential development? What are we taking on that the developer had been providing in terms of costs and maintenance and all that? And then the other one is, I'm looking for any, any examples or stories of the reduction in parking lowering rents or home sale prices. So I'm curious about both those things. Continuing to read, and luckily COVID has given me more time to read, so I've been reading more. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a clarifying question regarding Ms. Schleck's reference to adding on an ADU at their home. We've already exempted ADUs from any parking requirements, correct? As part of our missing middle? Thank you, Leonard. All right. So we are going to move on. Much more. Oh, I'm sorry. City manager Jay Bernie?
Well, I thought I'd answer the question on the permit. So I clarified for the individuals that were here, for our Pride reps, that for those particular permit fees, those are for stationary events. So because they are a march and a moving event, there are no permit fees for road closures. So if that is resolved, I explain that to them. They're very happy with that answer. So they'll make sure they're really clear in their permit applications that that's what they're planning to do.
Wonderful outcome. Thank you for that. All right. We're going to move on to tonight's consent calendar. I need a motion to approve. Is that moved?
Second.
Any, well, I have three polls, and then I'll ask if there's any others or any questions. So I've got polls for item 4B, which is approval of the 2023 Neighborhood Matching Grants. I've got a poll for item 4C, which is approval of appointments of the inaugural Members of the Cultural Access Program Advisory Board, AKA Inspire Olympia. And then item 4F is approval of an ordinance consolidating land use permit processes. We brought that up earlier. We made a small change, but we thought it would also be important to bring forward to get some context for why the staff report is so thick. All right. So we'll start with item 4B. I think Lydia Morehead, yes, is here to talk about the matching grants.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Lydia Morehead again. I'm Associate Planner with CPD, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the city's Neighborhood Matching Grant Program and to present to you our grant funding recommendation this year. The purpose of this program is to help Olympia's recognized neighborhood associations fund community-driven projects. And the program's goals are to fund projects that foster civic pride, provide an environmental benefit, enhance and beautify neighborhoods, foster community engagement, and promote the broader interests of Olympia. This is a matching grant, which means that neighborhoods are required to match the amount awarded with either cash, materials, and/or volunteer time. Grant projects need to be ready to go and completed in approximately six months. In order for applications to be eligible for grant funding, neighborhoods have some minimum requirements they have to meet. These include enrolling in the city's recognized neighborhood association program, which happens every January. They have, have no open contracts from previous years. Projects need to be nonprofit in nature and accessible to the public, and they need to meet one or more of the program goals. This year's applications were evaluated and scored based on each project's consistency with the program's goals by a grant review team and one council liaison. The top-scoring applications were recommended for funding. And I'll show you those recommendations right here. You should see it on the screen. You can see the grant review team recommendation shown here. The team's recommendation is to fund seven applications, which will use the entire budgeted amount of $23,000. These applications are expected to engage approximately 1,500 volunteer hours and to leverage approximately $80,000 in projects and improvements in Olympia's neighborhoods. This year's applications include a variety of projects, from festivals and get-togethers to managing green areas and developing some new community spaces. They also include funding administrative costs, which help neighborhood associations function. So on behalf of the grant review team, I recommend these seven matching grant applications for funding, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Lydia. Any questions? Councilmember Payne?
Hi, Lydia.
Hi there.
It's good to see you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your work on this. When we met a few weeks ago, you put together this wonderful equity index so that you could essentially determine and score these applicants. And I thought that it was very well-done and very thoughtful on your part and on the part of staff. And obviously, there was a lot of buzz around one particular project, the Olympia Northeast Neighborhood Alliance's request, which is the former gas station that was there on the corner of San Francisco. And so it's good to see that excitement, and it's good to see that the community is paying attention to these projects that are being put forward. And I also just wanted to speak to the Council of Neighborhood Associations and point out that they are also a part of this for the work that they do in a partner with us, with the city. And I think this is great timing as we are in the midst of our conversations around our updating of our memorandum of understanding. And so again, just gratitude to you for your work. Thanks, Lydia.
All right. Next item we had pulled for comments is item 4C, which is the approval of the Cultural Access Program Board. And I'm going to have the Chair of Community Livability and Public Safety, Chair Wen, speak to that. to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, this one tonight, I know that, uh, for folks that have been watching, um, can y'all hear me? Uh, it just went out for a second. But for the folks that have been watching consecutively, um, our more recent council meetings, and then definitely, uh, my committee members on community livability and public safety, we are ready to get this across the finish line, um, for the cultural, uh, and, and realize a Cultural Access Program Advisory Board. Um, but, uh, I think it wouldn't do it justice without, um, really giving it a special spotlight tonight. Um, so, uh, tonight, the council will be seating the inaugural members of the Cultural Access Program Advisory Board. Um, this is, uh, as mentioned, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee has had the pleasure of recommending a slate of nine very impressive community members for appointment to the board. Uh, these nine members were, uh, chosen from, uh, a field of over thirty applications for the advisory board, so there was a lot of interest on it. Um, and, uh, myself, my colleagues, and, and also with the support of city staff, um, interviewed more than, uh, twenty candidates, both in person and remotely, over three special meetings in, uh, April and May. Uh, the ones that are giggling are the ones that helped me do it, um, 'cause we remember those nights. Yeah, it was a lot. Um, so a little context for, um, some folks that might be tuning in and thinking, well, well, what the heck is a Cultural Access Program Advisory Board? Um, that's a good question. Um, so last year, uh, our community approved the creation of a Cultural Access Program, which, uh, was really to increase our community's access to the arts, cultures, heritage, sciences, um, by reducing barriers and expanding offerings, uh, particularly for underserved youth. Um, and if you would like more information on that, you can find it on our website under Cultural Access or Inspire Olympia. Um, I digress. Uh, the advisory board will do, uh, the important work of ensuring that the new Cultural Access Program's processes, procedures, and criteria are structured in ways that ensure the benefit to the public. Um, and with that, I would just like to, uh, give again gratitude to, uh, those members of the community that served on the ad hoc Cultural Access Program Advisory Committee. Um, and that is a group of folks that provided initial screening of the applications and offered recommendations, um, for what the program should look like as a whole. Um, and then, uh, of course, I'd like to take this time to also, uh, thank, uh, my committee mates on community livability and public safety, as well, uh, as staff that have really helped, uh, bring this, um, to fruition. Um, and I really believe that we have, um, we're off to a strong start with, uh, with a lot of talent, um, from community members on this advisory board. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Any questions for, uh, Chair, Councilmember Wen? Many hats. Uh, all right. We're gonna move on to four F, which is this ordinance consolidating land use permit processes. This is one of those areas that really touches a lot of people in our community, but there's a lot of work that goes behind it to make it smooth for our community members. So Leonard Bauer, who is our Director of Public Work, uh, Director of Community Planning and Development.
Thank you. One job's enough for me.
Just scare ya? Surprise!
No, I really appreciate, uh, that this has been pulled. This is one of those items that seems kind of mundane. If you look at the title, we're improving our permit processes, but it really has a lot of, uh, impact. In June of, uh, 2021, the City Council adopted a housing action plan, and there are, um, six strategies to increase housing supply, affordability, variety, and stability in our community. And the city's working on many of those actions and strategies right now. This is one of them. Um, this action will make the permit process for new housing easier to understand and navigate for those who want to build or renovate new housing, or old housing, existing housing. Um, we currently, in our current code, have seven separate code chapters that someone must go to to figure out their process and how to navigate through the, the permitting. And this will consolidate that into one chapter in one location. Um, there are dozens of permit types are consolidated into four types, so it's much easier to say, I have this type of permit, here's my process. Um, so that should reduce time and cost needed to obtain permits to build and renovate housing and hopefully attract more housing construction to our community by making it easier to understand. I want to point out, this was made possible by a grant from the Department of Commerce, the State Department of Commerce, and, um, also lots of good public input and the work of many, many staff. It's, uh, as you can imagine, a very complicated and detail-oriented process, and I really appreciated all the staff that helped and reviewed it and made sure that, hopefully, all the references work and everything fits together. Um, thank you so much for, uh, the opportunity to speak, and, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Absolutely. Any questions for Leonard, who is our Director of Community Planning and Development? All right. All right. Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to appreciate this, this work, that while it's, um, while there's debate about some of the kinds of incentives and encouragements that, that we, we, we talk about for encouraging housing and encouraging development, I think there's no question that, uh, that improving our processes and making our, our process easier to understand is just, is a benefit for everybody. And, um, I, I just, and I, I wanna appreciate that Leonard had many, many people across different staff teams working on, on finding, uh, finding the ways to consolidate all this. It was a huge lift, and I, I, I think it's, it's going to benefit the whole community. So I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So are there any additional questions or comments from the, uh, dais regarding tonight's consent calendar? Okay. Council, uh, Councilmember Wen?
Thank you. Just a quick point of privilege. Um, uh, just as I just quickly recognize this. So for, uh, though I did not ask to poll four D, I do want to acknowledge that, uh, four D is approval of an appointment to the Arts Commission to fill a vacancy. Um, and, uh, tonight, um, uh, through consent, we will be appointing Coral Gary. I did notice that Coral is in the audience, so thank you, uh, so much for coming, coming down here, and, um, and you got to hear public comment too, so I hope that was thrilling for ya. But, uh, so thank you so much for, uh, your, um, your interest and your soon-to-be service on the Arts Commission, um, and thanks for choosing us.
All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, uh, passes, and we are on to other business this evening. And that is item six A, and tonight it is, uh, pending approval of the Downtown Improvement and Theater District Funding Package. And to explain what that means, we have, um, Mike Reed, who is our Economic Development Director here at the city. And welcome, Mike.
Uh, greeting councilmembers. My name's Mike Reed. I'm the Economic Development Director, uh, for the city of Olympia. So tonight, I am really excited. I've, um, to present, uh, this package of potential funding to you. I also did want to recognize and call out some distinguished guests that I have in the audience. Uh, we do have Audrey Henley from the Olympia Film Society, Aaron Lamb, and, um, uh, Jim Canber from the Harlequin Productions as well. So they're very interested in this subject. So I'm gonna start off with some good news, really, really good news. And I think the, the, the first thing it really associated with that is, we had an editorial that was written a couple of months ago about downtown Olympia. And I think that we have heard and seen a lot of comments, um, with some community frustration, um, uh, with downtown, and, uh, downtown was hit especially hard with COVID and the impacts on the businesses that we felt there. And to have an editorial come along and say the thing that just even that headline there says, "If you haven't been to downtown Olympia lately, you might be surprised at how popular it is." That editorial went on to talk about a series of, uh, surveys that had been done that had indicated from the public and stakeholders in downtown that we were getting more and more feedback that downtown is, um, surely on the right track. Uh, we heard from businesses in that survey, the Olympia Downtown Alliance, um, recognized the work that the city has done, uh, to bring, um, people back to downtown. And also wanted to recognize the work that, um, the PBIA and ODA have contributed to making that happen as well. And you can see examples of that. So on that right, uh, up hand, that right corner, that is a alley lighting project that we have downtown. We've gotten many of our alleys lit and, uh, lit up. Um, it looks incredible at night. We're getting a lot of positive feedback. That was a partnership between the city, PBIA, and ODA to execute that work. Uh, in the center square there, we've got another example of ways that we're working, uh, as teams to continue to bring people down, and that is the promotion that the Olympia Downtown Alliance does. Uh, their, um, shop and dine week they, that they do, they do a number of these over the years, and we're, uh, over the course of the year, and we see a lot of that. And then, I know you were all there, Arts Walk this year was, uh, incredible. Um, and it just showed me the vibrancy that we can have in our downtown. And I think we all felt really good after the last three years to see the volume of people and families coming down and having a great time. So that's the good news. The bad news is that's not being felt, that positive swing and trend, it's not being felt by everybody. And the area that I think that is struggling, not I think, I know is struggling, is our performance, uh, venues, um, specifically our, our community theaters that we have here. So this was a article that came out just about a week after that editorial. And, uh, Aaron Lamb, who's in the audience, is quoted in there talking about how we are really just struggling to bring audiences back to, um, community theater and live performances in, uh, in Olympia. And he also said, "And, um, that's a nationwide, what'd he say? And, and it's not unique to us." And he's not wrong. It is not unique to Olympia. This is actually a report, um, that was done about, it's a nationwide trend here. And this is showing all of the different sort of community, uh, visitor-serving organizations. So these are different examples of them. And the fifty percent line indicates normal. So what was sort of pre-COVID normal? And you can see at the very bottom, so getting back to fifty would mean that you've gotten back to a pre-pandemic normal level. So you can see, public parks, we're actually getting more people nationwide go to parks post-COVID than they did pre-COVID, by a significant margin. Uh, zoos, public beaches, aquariums, museums, sports arenas, all back to normal levels and exceeding them, very bottom. Performing arts, live theater, dance. Not only are they not back to COVID levels, they're still significantly below COVID. So there's, there's a whole host of ideas about why that may be. Uh, most, the biggest one, it's indoors and you're seated. And so it's, 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 there's still some challenges with overcoming some of the population that may feel uncomfortable with that kind of venue. So with knowing that information, knowing the good and the bad, I want to make a recommendation for a funding package. The first part is, let's put some gas tank in the good and keep it going and make it better. When you find that you're getting the outcomes that you want, but you're really not all the way there, that's the time to really give it a punch, punch it up and make something happen. So I am recommending a series of investments that we could make. These would be in a partnership that we would do with the Olympia Downtown Alliance. We've contracted with them before to do similar types of work. So the examples being, uh, let's continue the downtown lighting enhancements that we have been doing. Uh, that would include making sure that we have holiday lighting for this season as well. Uh, we are looking at a retail pop-up program. This is a program designed to utilize vacant space that we have downtown that we could put, uh, starting entrepreneurs in to maybe give that space a test drive and promote that space. Uh, third is a placemaking micro-grant program. This is something that the Downtown Alliance has already been doing, but it's five hundred dollars per, um, per successful applicant to be able to do something. We've seen this, um, used for mini-events, used for, um, sprucing up the front of their business, uh, trying to approve street appeal on their street, things of that nature. Uh, fourth would be, uh, continue some pressure washing expansion. Uh, the Olympia Downtown Alliance, um, does have a staff person that is able to do some pressure washing. This would be able to add some capacity to that so we can get more of our sidewalks pressure washed. And then, uh, the fifth one there is this Love Olly brand expansion. If you've seen this, um, all of the sort of, uh, swag, if you will, that we, that has been, um, utilized over the last three years. It's a, Love Olly is a brand that started there. Uh, putting some dollars into, um, an expansion of that program to be used for things like window clings for vacant buildings, uh, pole wraps, banners, and things of that nature. Um, we're just getting a lot of feedback that that brand of Love Olly is really starting to connect and, um, get some legs under it. So that's, that's investing in, in, um, in sort of what we're working. And then, um, next is, uh, an investment into our theaters. So we have, um, we actually have four theaters in our theater district downtown. Um, absent from that list is the Washington Center for Performing Arts, and that's intentional in the sense that we do provide a lot of assistance to the Washington Center for Performing Arts in terms of access to, uh, the facilities, teams that we have, as well as the contribution that they receive, um, from the lodging tax. Um, but the three others do not receive that same sort of assistance from the city. So we are looking at a fifty thousand dollar award to the Olympia Family Theater, i.e. one hundred thousand dollar award to the Olympia Film Society or Capitol Theater, which I do want to note, uh, twenty twenty-four will be their one hundred year anniversary of that building. Very cool. Um, and, uh, third there, a hundred and fifty thousand to Harlequin Productions. In order to obtain that funding, uh, what we would be asking for them, um, would be to provide an annual report for ten years or up to ten years. Um, they need, they would need to be, um, reporting to us, um, uh, that they have developed a low-income and a, or affordable access program, and then report annually on how many, uh, citizens are utilizing that program and the cost to the organization to be able to administer that program. Um, complete, we'd like them to complete an accessibility assessment, so that's a disability accessibility, uh, assessment, and then report annually to us the kinds of improvements that they have made to address any deficiencies that were identified in that first assessment. Um, third, we'd like to, uh, see them host a community benefiting meeting, event, or for, uh, or forum semi-annually. So that could be hosting a neighborhood meeting or hosting something for, uh, the Olympia Downtown Alliance or the PBIA, something that brings people together that is not a ticketed event, that is really just using the space at times as a community accessibility venue. Um, and then, uh, fourth, identify and implement ways to support emerging artists and arts entrepreneurs with their space, um, preferably in a low-income mechanism as well. Um, then you may be thinking, well, what happens if they, if we give them this money and then they don't do this? Um, the biggest would be that there would be a failure to report to us annually on what they're doing on this would exclude them from any future funding, including lodging tax, cultural access tax, um, funding, and any of our various arts grants that we have. So this is the whole package put together. You'll also notice there at the bottom, uh, I also did include the Olympia Indie Music History Project, which is a Heritage Commission-funded project. They are reaching conclusion of some, uh, first phase of that. And while I had the effort open, I figured now is the time. There's more work needed to be done there. What we are hearing is Olympia has a very, very rich, uh, independent music history, and finding ways to promote that, move that forward, and find a keeper for that is going to be needed, associated with the work that they're doing. So this is effectively putting some dollars to continue that program. So this total, um, funding package would have, uh, an amount of four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The funding source would be coming from our Economic Development Reserves, which currently has two million sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, which if the full funding award was given, it would be one million six hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty. And finally, I would not be doing my job correctly if I was not shamelessly and unrepentantly promoting all things good in Olympia, which would include three great options for shows to support these community theaters. Your first one, currently, uh, showing at the Olympia Family Theater is Alice in Wonderland, which has been going on for a week now already, but you still have time from May nineteenth to the twenty-eighth to see it. Uh, Josh Blue, who is an Evergreen alumni, will be performing at the Capitol Theater. You can get your tickets to that, um, at olympiafilmsociety.org. Uh, he will be performing on June sixteenth. And then finally, Hundred Days. And then finally, 100 Days is performing right now at Harlequin, so get your tickets. And I'm happy to answer any questions and invite guests up if you have questions of them as well.
I know I've got Councilmember Wynn's hand, it's already been up. So can I get away?
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna get excited. So I have two questions that, I'm just gonna go ahead and ask her, different from each other. But first, I'm curious about the, specifically for the three different theaters, the funding, how was the funding decided, right? So there are three different amounts, of course, there are three different types of theaters. I do like that you pointed out that, you know, we do give the Washington Center a lot of support, and we do love the Washington Center, and also we have a lot of other lovely theaters in town. So I'm interested in how the amounts were determined. And then also for the requirement of funding to these theaters and doing that annual report for 10 years, makes sense. It's also more stuff to do for 10 years. So I am curious about, you know, is that, I would somewhat assume that since the three, that we have representatives from all three of the theaters here, that you're probably excited about this. But I do wonder about, you know, is this cumbersome for them? And even though it is information that, you know, we would like to know, but is there, and then kind of a little bit on that is, are there ways to, is this helpful for other, like, does this have other benefits other than us knowing, of course? Does it streamline other processes for the theater, that kind of thing? So I'll pause there.
So.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
From agenda setting, this came up. I had a very robust conversation about this very reporting requirement. Were you briefed on that conversation?
Yes.
Okay. I felt very much the same. I thought, this is onerous, this is 10 years, it'll be spent well before then, so why are they still reporting after it's gonna be spent? And so we were gonna find out from legal whether it was a requirement, it was a random number?
Well, nothing in life is random.
No, I'm sorry.
Especially not from our attorneys. But there's some flexibility here. So there does need to be, and Mike always jumps in here since it's being asked, but there does need to be some level of reporting. These are public funds that are being provided to all the theaters. And they, like us, want to make sure they're doing all they can to make, you know, theater access equitable for everyone. So these ties to lower-income households and families are things they're already doing and have programs like that. So I don't know if this reporting will be cumbersome, but we certainly can talk about the length of time. If you would like to shrink that up from 10 years, that certainly seems reasonable from my view, and we can talk about that as well.
Okay. I would like to hear from the folks that have to fill these forms out. How many years do you? My gut was three.
Oh, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
We're asking them.
Okay. Tip my hand.
Hi, everyone. I'm Audrey Henley, I'm from the Olympia Film Society and the executive director there. In regards to reporting, it is something that we do annually. As most of us theaters have an annual report that we do, I don't know if that's something that can roll into reporting. We are committed to making a report annually through nonprofit law. So that's something that we do share and it's public access and can be delivered to the city, wrapped up in that. In terms of amount of years, 10 seems a little long, but again, if it's something that's connected to our annual reporting, it's something we do anyway. I think it just depends on how much information and how you guys want to see it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Lamb, I'm the producing artistic director at Harlequin Productions. And I'll echo what Audrey said. I think any grant-making organization will expect some sort of due diligence on our part in order to ensure that the funds awarded are used for intended purposes. So this is not out of the realm of the ordinary for us. I do think it should be within the grant-making timeline. And if 10 years is the timeline for this award, then, again, with the annual reporting we do, this really falls right in line with that. So I think it's, I give it back to council. Thank you.
I guess where I was going with it is that this amount of money spread out over 10 years, reporting back to these requirements, we want you to use it sooner than that.
So maybe that was the point of clarification that I made. They can receive the full amount after their first report. I'm not saying, the intention is not to dole out the money over 10 years.
Okay. So it's like they apply and then they get reimbursed? Is that how this is working?
It would not be a reimbursement. They would basically upon their first application and providing the actual first report or first, we could provide all the dollars. Then that's why we have the language in there, failure to report on future would disqualify you. So it is not a 10-year payout.
Okay.
The challenge that we have is associated, and maybe this is another point for legal, is we have to show that we're getting a return for the amount. Otherwise, it could be looked at as potentially like a gift of public funds. So we need very clearly that there is an award amount or something associated with the amount of tickets that are being provided at a low-income rate. If they had to provide all of those tickets in a three-year period for a $150,000 award, that would be, I would assume, pretty difficult.
Okay.
So that's, it was to try to reduce the impact of that award by stretching it out over a period of time.
I see, I see. But putting in an elevator, chew that up right away.
Yeah.
If it's an ADA accessibility thing. Anyhow, so you guys know what you need to do. So Councilmember Wynn?
Oh, yeah. And I also, I just want to keep this quick because I see Mayor Potem Gilman also has a hand. So I just want to say, I'm very excited about this.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanna, I guess, I guess I'm so excited, I want to make sure that for our theaters, the juice is worth the squeeze. So could we talk about the, or just briefly, could you talk about how the amounts were determined?
Sure, sure. Ultimately, I interviewed and met with all three organizations and talked to them, tried to come up with a package that fit into what felt like an appropriate budget amount to even bring forward. Their needs set seem a little bit different, their audiences seem a little bit different, and their ability to use their venues seems different. So for example, Harlequin doesn't use their venue in the same way that Capitol Theater uses theirs. So Capitol Theater has a greater degree of flexibility in the sense that they can use theirs as a movie theater, which frankly, more people are going back to the movies than are going to theaters. So we're trying to find some balance there. The Olympia Film, the Olympia Little, or Olympia Family Theater is just a smaller venue as well. So trying to find that space where we're meeting the needs with the right amount.
Got it. Thank you. And I have Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Payne, followed by Mayor Potem Gilman.
Glad we were talking about the reporting requirement, that was one of my questions. And so like, when we make this decision tonight, are we locking in the reporting requirements?
No, we can negotiate that and that can be part of the contract. What I need is the, is this the appropriate award amount total?
Yeah, okay. That's great. I just want to make sure that we weren't locking anything in for those reporting.
I will defer to legal and finance what we need in that contract to remain in compliance and make that as flexible as possible.
Yeah, and I think just reading it on the slide of like, oh, failure to report and you won't ever get LTAC funds again. I hope we're a little bit softer than that. Because sometimes, I mean, sometimes shifts happen in organizations, leadership changes over, things are late, things get missed. And so I just, you know, want to make sure that we don't accidentally put someone in a bad spot.
Sure.
Just sound a little harsh. I also have a question around the community benefiting meeting component to that. So are, is the requirement that they pro bono provide their facility to a community group for a non-ticketed event, or just that it be non-ticketed and open to the community?
I think that the hope would be that they would be providing access to the space in a, sort of a free forum. So host an event for an organization twice a year.
Let's just make sure we're clear on that thing, because it wasn't super clear to me in the presentation. And I'll just say that I got to see 100 Days, it was really good. Y'all get a chance to get out there. Very worthwhile performance.
All right. Councilmember Payne?
Yes. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much to Mike and to everyone in our theater district who are just, you're partners with us. This is, looking at this list of projects that are funded through this is exactly what I know I want to see, and I'm pretty sure the rest of us want to see too, happening in our community. And so just all-around gratitude for that. I did want to ask a question that I know, I believe Councilmember Wynn spoke to earlier, which is, how exactly are we, are we using what comes from the report in the future? So it's like, okay, they did it, but what are we going to do with that?
Sure. I think that the first thing is really to start tying this up to the cultural access tax program. So the cultural tax program will not be able to award, provide awards right now. Otherwise, I think we would have tried to find ways to utilize that program in this space. We are not at a place where we can, where we can make those awards yet, but the need is critical and it's now. So that's why this is, part of this is coming forward right now. So I think what we would be looking to do is, how are we, the information that we're collecting, how are we reporting that upwards? I also am reporting that to the cultural access program and allowing them to sort of build off of this information as well. I also, from an economic development standpoint, understanding better the role that these organizations play in our community by providing to us their annual report and any other additional things. My personal interest in this is actually, I want to know more about the emerging artists and arts entrepreneurs that they're supporting with their space. That's the piece that's of the most interest to me. I will also say, though, that in our creative district that we're working on right now, one of the things that we have heard from the creative district task force that has been working on this is addressing accessibility issues in our venues and spaces. So having reporting on that as to what's occurred and what improvements are being made, I think that that is something that will be valuable associated with the broader creative district and their needs and interests.
Mayor Potem Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'm really excited about the package altogether. And to this question of the, what we're calling annual reporting, looks to me like it's actually, it's actually efforts and activities that we're specifying and not just a report, but actually something we're asking folks to do. So I just, I wanted to clarify that, that I think it's, I think it's good to ask for these things, that this is the public benefit we ask for in exchange for the public funds going in. And then I also just want to say that I support the idea of modifying the motion to have a shorter timeframe on this reporting.
Okay. Could it be until funds are expended?
My understanding is that we weren't making a decision on the reporting component, just the funding component, and that the reporting component would be worked out among our, with our staff. Is that correct?
Jay?
Yeah, that works. I think tonight, if council can give some direction on the funding package and give, I think Mike has heard your feedback on terms of the length of reporting, and we can work that out with each of the recipients of the funding in terms of putting the contract together. So I think, I just want to reiterate that what we want to do is both get what we need out of this to make sure that we have the public benefit demonstrated, and we also want to make it really easy on the recipients as well, right? So we want, we want both those things to be, occur at the same time.
Thank you. I've got just a couple of things to add, great questions and comments. This is an unusual request, but these are unusual times. And I've been seated, seated on the Lodging Tax Advisory Board for three years now, I think, during the worst of times for this, this market sector. So we also helped out with our lodging tax in ways that normally we wouldn't with operations. So I understand that this is a patch to get you through until the cultural access dollars are available, then you can apply through that program. Because a lot of what you're asking them to do with these dollars directly ties back to what the cultural access mission is, is right, public benefit for nonprofits. And so I just want anyone in the listening public, this is an unusual process for economic development funds, but again, it's remarkable times that we're still pulling through together. And so for anyone else listening that has a nonprofit in this, this sector, be patient, there will be cultural access coming through next year, next year. So you'll hear more about that. So thank you for your work in this regard, and looking forward to seeing what you're doing with it.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Would you like a motion?
I would.
I move to approve the downtown improvement and theater district funding package.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right. That takes us to the end of our regular business meeting. We did make it through all the public comments, so now it's just time for a council member and staff report. Mayor's report, I, I don't really have. I was at opening day and Wooden Boat Show, I was able to select for my last year in office the mayor's award for the Wooden Boat Show, and that was always a fun tradition for me to have. And I, they're coming back from taking three years off, and it was just, again, fun to be downtown, and it was packed and sunny and wonderful. So that's my report. I'll go to Councilmember Madron.
My list, I missed last meeting, so I didn't get to give my land use report. And now today, we've already had a couple of those topics thoroughly addressed. But at our last land use meeting, we did work on the minimum parking issue, which will be coming before us again on June 6th. And we also did the consolidating land use process, which we just voted on tonight. But a couple of other things coming our way. Our state energy building code stuff will be coming forward. And we heard from Dr. Baraf, particularly around commercial building electrification, electric vehicle parking requirements. These things were just kind of discussed in the land use committee because they weren't fully ready for a vote, but we also didn't want to delay anything. So they are, they're on our way to us as a full council. So I think they'll be coming to us as a business item, so we all get to dig in nice and deep on that. The regional housing council, we did, we've been working with our new advisory boards for allocating funding. And I just, one of the things I just wanted to flag for you all is that there is a really, really serious reduction in available revenue for homeless services. A lot of it because it's tied to home sales, REIT recording fees, stuff like that. I'm talking about a 50%, 40% to 50% reduction in what's available right now. There is $45 million that the legislature has allocated to help with backfill some of these issues. We don't know how much Thurston County is going to get yet. We did hold off on funding decisions for that, for that funding until we know. But it's pretty serious. And so ongoing advocacy is going to be needed at the legislature to fill in these gaps at the local level, because it's very dependent on how much homes are being sold to have these services for, for folks who need them. And also for the regional housing council, Olympia has been supporting the, the group by, so by supporting the stipends for the advisory committee members, just the process to get them done. And it's turned out to be a little bit onerous, it's not apples to apples for what we do for our advisory committees, because we didn't appoint these folks. So we did vote to recommend that the county either develop an ordinance so that they can take that in-house themselves or work with a third party, but to find some way to resolve it so it doesn't fall on Olympia to continue to do that. Not that we don't want to help, but we do a lot, and it was getting to be a little bit much. And finally, the tribal work group met just yesterday. And some of the things that we talked about is, you know, how they want to be engaged in the upcoming comprehensive plan update. One of the things that we talked about is that in early 2024, you know, as our council-to-council meeting, maybe having some extended time, both of our councils together and have having our staff present on the various chapters that they're interested in, they can have their staff there, and we can engage with them in that way to see what, how they, what they would like to see in the comprehensive plan. We talked about the welcome pole, that we were on the waitlist with Andrea Wilbersago to, to have a welcome, welcome pole car for the city. We talked about where that might be located, a prominent location, somewhere where, where there's good pedestrian access, something around the water, particularly the Deshute Estuary, get some healing energy around that. And we talked about a couple of other things, but Chris Peters did say he's gonna get back to us with some dates on them hosting us for our next council, council meeting on a boat. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Payne.
Yes, just one item. Considering I've been bogged down with zero parking minimum homework, as I'm sure we all have over the last week. So just earlier today, actually, myself, Mayor Potem Gilman, City Manager Bernie, and the chief, and Shelby Parker, we all sat down with the Olympia School Board to have a discussion about school resource officers. This was, if you recall, a conversation we had about a year last year when we had our annual meeting with the school board. And so just an update that we are picking up where we left off essentially and continuing those conversations and looking to find a solution for a path forward that works best for our community. So excited about the continuation of those discussions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wynn.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit surprised. I didn't realize this discussion was happening, so I was, yeah. So I would love to get with our city manager and get, get up to speed on, on the process for this. I know that last time when we met with our full council and the school board, there, you know, it was really a robust discussion, so would love to get up to speed on how it, how it's continuing. And then as for my reports, I've been continuing to connect with community. I think, I think we've heard a lot from different people tonight, so I'll spare you all, and I'll give you a heavier one next time. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Gilman.
Sure. Last week, I substituted for Councilmember Madron at the Transportation Policy Board and held up the interests of Olympia. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. City Manager Jay Burne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a follow-up on the SRO discussion. This was a meeting the school board requested with us. They initiated this conversation. I definitely won't have it on my list to update council members of kinda how that, where that conversation, what it looked like today and where we think it might go from here. So I'll have that on my list for you. And then just only other, other item I had is just a reminder for the community that the finance committee that was scheduled for tomorrow night has been canceled. So if you were looking for finance committee tomorrow night, we're gonna find another date to reschedule it. So stay tuned. That's my report.
Thank you so much. And with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.